Welcome to the monthly meeting of the Garrett County Board of Education. And I'd like to call the meeting to order. And please note that all board members are present. Our student board members, however, are not present and lead us at this time. And so at this time, if you would, join me in a moment's silence. Thank you very much. If you're able to please stand and we've seen the pledge of the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much. And item C is to adopt the agenda. I'll entertain a motion to do that.
I will make a motion to adopt the agenda.
Dr. Lamb made a motion to adopt the agenda. Do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Hurd, second. Any comments or questions? All in favor, let me know by the hand. All board members were in favor. We bring this to item two, communications. And item A is a site-based decision. A little few minutes. And I stress to all my fellow board members, we've had an opportunity to go over those. It's there for your information. Item B, no audience comments, I don't believe. I say any board members have anything you'd like to share.
Just encouraged with renovations that are taking place in our schools. It's exciting to drive by and see things happen.
Okay, about you. All right. Then item D is our superintendent for construction update and bonding capacity.
So Trace Creek is with us. David Mylon, we haven't seen for a little while. And he has provided a video. We'll run that. And if he has anything he'd like to say during this time, he's more than welcome. So we're glad to have him with us.
Don't have the podium, so I just stand up. I don't like to sit and talk always. So, well, it's good to be back. I don't feel like I've changed much since the last time you all saw me. I've got to be a little bit older. But no, we had, we recently acquired an individual at our company that does a lot better drone footage than what you've been accustomed to in the past. So here, you know, as we're wrapping up, we wanted to give you guys something that was a little bit more of an overall and something you could present on your, on your website or however you so choose. There's also some still photos from the drone footage on that, on that device that Dr. Soul has. But personally, I know that we've, we, over the last close to two years, we've had some challenges. But I hope that you all as a, as a board are as proud of that project as I am looking at it now, knowing what all we've been through to get there. But it's one, it's one excellent-looking facility. And I can tell you, I'm working with another district not very far from you here. And they're referencing your facility as the mark that they're trying to reach. So you should all be proud. We are. Thank you. Thank you, guys.
So part of that as well is keeping you informed of what the bonding capacity is. I've got that up in front of you right now. So you'll notice that the total bonding capacity is down a little over half a million dollars from last month. But you'll also remember that last month it was up over almost a million and a half from the previous month. So we're just in this volatile state. But we will keep you up to speed on what's happening with that as we continue to progress and move forward.
If I could, I'm a little sorry. If you talk to their, you know, folks who are there, but with Fed leaving the interest rates unchanged, is that going to hurt us?
Well, it doesn't help us. But no. It's, the trigger on all of this is what you just talked about, and that's the rate. And so as the rate goes up, it hurts your capacity. As the rate goes down, it improves it.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. We also have attached any personnel changes that we've had since May. And this is the time of year when we have several personnel changes. So I encourage you to take a look at those, make sure that you see what's going on. Just so the public knows, you all are not part of making those decisions. You're simply a part of reviewing them and making sure. When we do this on a monthly basis, it makes it official. There are many policies that say we can't take certain actions until the board has seen this information. So it's important for the community to know that that's why you see this on a monthly basis.
Okay, thank you. Item three is reports. And item A, under item three, is a treasurer's report. And I think we've had an opportunity to go over the treasurer's report.
Hopefully you have. And if you ever have any questions about it, we always encourage you to reach out to Ms. Coffee. She'll be more than happy to help walk you through that. You have the summary, and then you have the detailed report. We always have that. Community is also welcome to take a look at that anytime they'd like to.
Item B is bills as presented.
Just a summary of what you have approved thus far through June. We'll continue to keep you up to speed on what those things are.
Okay, thank you very much. I appreciate that. Item four is the consent agenda. And there's quite a bit in the consent agenda. But if no board member has anything that you want to pull out for any reason, I'll entertain a motion to adopt the consent agenda.
I'll make a motion to adopt the consent agenda.
Thank you. Mr. Hurd, second.
I second the motion.
Okay. Ms. Smith made the motion.
I always want to thank people for donations.
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah. Appreciate all of those. Certainly. Ms. Davis seconded the motion. Any questions? All in favor, let me know by the hand. All board members are in favor of the consent agenda as presented is adopted. Item five is the action agenda. And item A is to approve pay application for the student athletic fields in the city.
This is the first pay application we've had for a couple of months. We're getting closer to wrapping up the project. As you all know, some of this may be actual payment for work that's being done. The majority of this is payment of retention funds that we've had for companies. We'll continue to work our way through that. We, you think it will be done next month or be the month after?
Sixty, it just depends on, on the way they bill, the way they invoice for it. Sixty days at the max. I'll push for, I'll try to get it next month, but sixty days possible.
So I just ask that since we had somebody here who could really speak that to you. I'd share with you maybe July, but it sounds like August to be safe. But at that point, we should wrap up the pay applications. Because of all of that and the updates that you see here, it's my recommendation that you approve these pay applications for the GCHS project.
Okay, you've heard the recommendation. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion. We approve the pay applications for this project.
Okay, Mr. Hurd made the motion.
I'll second that motion.
Dr. Lamb, second. Any questions? So it may be done by the time school starts back. Hopefully.
Close, yep.
There, at worst case, there may be one straggler that doesn't get me their pay application in. But that, that list right there gets rid of the majority of the contractors. It's work is 100% completed. All their punch list items are done, and they've, they've invoiced all the way out and sufficiently done so.
Thank you. All in favor, let me know by the hand. All board members were in favor. Item A is approved. Item B is the first reading of policy update for the 25-26 school year.
Today requires no action on your part with this first reading. It's to simply put that in place in your packets. We've provided a summary for you to review between now and July. To raise any questions that you might have, this policy update is from KSBA, but it's also been reviewed by your board attorney. And some of the changes that are going to be part of the policy are recommendations from your board attorney that will be in addition to what KSBA has included in theirs. There's some challenging pieces of legislation. We're going to talk about one of them briefly here in just a second. But I would encourage you to review that summary. Also linked are the entire policy update. So feel free to look at those. Should you have any questions between now and July, please let me know. We're happy to address those with you so that when we have the second reading in July, we'll be ready to move forward and improve those policy changes.
Thank you, sir. Item C is to approve, district approved communications for compliance with Senate Bill 181.
Senate Bill 181 has taken on a life of its own. Most of you are familiar with it. I don't want to spend a lot of time going into a lot of detail tonight. We have had individual conversations about it. We've shared some information with our staff about it. Based on the, your approval or lack of approval on this particular item, we'll share additional information with staff tonight to give them a little bit more clarity. This basically, if I was trying to summarize it, gives, gives direction, I'm about to say clear, and it's not clear, but gives direction on how a district employee or volunteer communicates with a student. This was driven by a concern that the legislature had, that there may be situations where adults in a school system have inappropriate conversations with students. And so one of the things that we will be asked to do is approve only those items that we feel meet the requirements set out by law. And we've worked with Grant, chatted with our board attorney on that. It has to be a board-approved item. It has to be an item that is traceable, and it has to be something that parents can review. So based on those three criteria, if you'll look at the recommended motion that I have there, we are going to recommend, or I'm going to recommend tonight, that you approve district-managed Google products and services, KDE-provided email, Remind, Class Dojo, and Infinite Campus for compliance with SB 181. I also want to be clear, though, that this is a very fluid situation, and things could change. If we find a product that will do better, we will make a shift. If we find an issue with anything that we're asking you to approve, we will ask you to unapprove it and pull it off. Our goal is to protect our staff and our students. I think by, by all accounts, the vast, vast, vast majority of employees across the state do not abuse what's out there. This is just going to hold us to a higher standard than anything that we do that makes it safer for students. It's hard to argue with. We're just going to have to figure out how to navigate some of this. So that's a long, a longer explanation than perhaps anybody would have wanted to hear. But I'm going to go back and repeat the motion. My recommendation is that you approve the district-managed Google products and services, the KDE-provided email, Remind, Class Dojo, and Infinite Campus for compliance with SB 181.
All right, you've heard the recommendation. Do I have a motion?
I will make that motion.
Dr. Lamb made a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Ms. Davis, second. Do you have any questions?
Have you discussed this with the setup, with the administrators?
Yes, yes.
About you. Okay, all in favor, let me know by the hand. All board members were in favor. Item C is approved. Item D, disapproved district funding assurance for the 25-26 school year.
Annually, KDE asks the board to justify that we are going to spend money appropriately. It's summarized by the document that you see in front of you around title funds, one, two, three, four, and all the way through, anything that we use, the money that comes from federal or state level. And what we need you to do is approve that, saying that you will abide by that, which then causes us to abide by that. So it's my recommendation that you approve the district funding assurances for the 25-26 school year.
Thank you, sir. You've heard the recommendation. Do I have a motion?
I will approve the district funding assurances for 25-26.
If Ms. Davis made the motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Hurd, second. Anybody have any questions? All in favor, let me know by the hand. All board members were in favor. Item D is approved. Item E is to approve updated certified evaluating plan for the 25-26 school year.
One of the legislative changes that occurred this year was the frequency of evaluation of certified staff. The legislature changed the requirement from it had to be every three years to it has to be every five years. When that change was made, it triggered a need for us to change our certified evaluation plan. That plan is composed, or written by and approved by a committee that's called a 50-50 committee. Fifty percent of the committee are teachers, fifty percent of the committee are administrators. They met, they accepted the legal recommendation of every five years as being the requirement. This does not preclude a principle from evaluating somebody on a four-year cycle, a three-year cycle, a two-year cycle, a one-year cycle. And this And this cycle only applies to those individuals who have tenure. Individuals who do not have tenure will still continue to be evaluated on a yearly cycle. So that hasn't changed at all. So my recommendation to you is to approve the updated certified evaluation plan for the 25, 26 school year.
All right, you've heard the recommendation. Do I have a motion?
I make a motion. We approve the updated certified evaluation plan for the 25, 26 school year.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Hurd made the motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Smith seconded. Anybody have any questions? All in favor, let me know by the hand. All board members were in favor. Item E is approved. Item F is to approve ARC chairperson for 25, 26 school year.
Again, annually, we ask you to approve those individuals who can serve as the ARC chairpersons. You'll see the list in front of you. It's the Director of Special Education, Exceptional Childhood Consultants, our principals, our assistant principals, and our school guidance counselors. And if the ARC is a speech-only ARC, then our speech pathologists can serve in that role. So it's my recommendation that you approve these appropriately-trained individuals to serve as ARC chairpersons for the 25, 26 school year.
Thank you, sir. You've heard the recommendation. Do I have a motion?
I make a motion. We approve the ARC chairpersons for 20, 25, 26.
Thank you. Ms. Davis made the motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second that motion.
Dr. Lamb seconded. Any questions or comments? All in favor, let me know by the hand. All board members were in favor. Item F is approved. Item G is to approve insurance and premiums for the 25, 26 school year.
The summary is in front of you. Our workers' comp premium would be $62,053 with Hartford Clear Path. And our Liberty Mutual will be either $452,064 with terrorism or $449,657 without. My recommendation is going to be that you do it with terrorism just as a, a, a plan because it's what we had this past year. You'll notice it's about a $31,000 increase from last year's amount, and we anticipate that next year there will be another increase because of everything that's happening in the insurance world with all the events that occur across our state. But that's a spot that we're at right now. So it's my recommendation that you approve our insurance carriers and our premiums for the 25, 26 school year.
All right, thank you. You've heard the recommendation. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the insurance premium for the 25, 26 school year.
Thank you, Mr. Smith made the motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second the motion.
Dr. Lamb seconded.
Do we have to say with terrorism or without it, or should we go both ways?
So probably to be safe, say with terrorism.
You okay with that, with terrorism?
Yeah.
With what's going on in the Middle East?
I agree, but.
It could spill over.
It could.
Any other questions? All in favor, let me know by the hand. All board members were in favor. Item G is approved. Item H is to approve fidelity bonds for board office staff for 25, 26 school year.
Board office staff that we're speaking of here is Ms. Coffey and Ms. Naylor. They handle the financial components, and each year we need to bond them. And so it would be my recommendation that you approve the fidelity bonds for those board office staff members for the 25, 26 school year.
Thank you, sir. You've heard the recommendation. Do I have a motion?
I'm going to approve fidelity bonds for board staff, board office staff.
Ms. Davis made the motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Hurd seconded. Anybody have any questions? All in favor, let me know by the hand. All board members were in favor. Item H is approved. Item I is to approve the middle school BG1 for the concrete project.
The next three items, I'm going to kind of loop, lump together in this conversation, and then we'll take each of them individually. Most of you know that the project is already underway. We're not really delaying anything here because we needed to move forward with it. This is to make sure that KDE is, is kept in the loop in doing this BG1. We didn't necessarily have to do this, but we are doing it to show that you all are fully aware of what's going on and that KDE is fully aware. The concrete project, the asphalt project, and the canopy project are being staggered in such a fashion that they work together as they should. We believe the concrete and asphalt will easily be completed before the start of the school year. Canopies may not be quite completed at that time, but we made the middle school principal aware of that. So she still felt like it was a good thing to do and is in favor of doing all this. If you haven't driven by there, you need to drive by because it looks a little bit different. And it's looked for a number of years. So Ms. Davis referenced the renovations, and this is one of them that's going on. So let's go back to the individual one with concrete. My recommendation that you approve the BG1 for the GMS concrete project. I originally wrote sidewalk, but let's say call the concrete.
Thank you, sir. You've heard the recommendation. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the BG1 for the concrete project.
Dr. Lamb made the motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Ms. Davis seconded. Anybody have any questions? All in favor, let me know by the hand. All board members were in favor. Item I is approved. Item J is to approve the asphalt project at the middle school.
Continuation of the same thing. Based on that, it's my recommendation you approve the BG1 for the GMS asphalt project.
Thank you, sir. You've heard the recommendation. Do I have a motion?
I make a motion. We approve this project for the asphalt project.
I thought y'all were going to make me make a motion. Since I seconded one last night. Okay, Mr. Hurd made the motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Mr. Dave, what is your last name? Mr. Smith.
Whatever it was.
Mr. Smith seconded. Anybody have any questions? All in favor, let me know by the hand. All board members were in favor. Item J is approved. Item K is to approve the canopy project at the middle school.
It's my recommendation that you approve BG1 for the GMS canopy project.
Thank you, sir. You've heard the recommendation. Do I have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Dr. Lamb made the motion, so I wouldn't have to. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Ms. Davis seconded. All in favor, let me know by the hand. Item K is approved. Item I is to approve superintendent evaluation policy.
You have this one, sir.
I, I asked the question, do we have, according to our policy, do we have to do this every year? Well, according to our policy, we do. But according to our board attorney, we can waive it for one year or whatever we want to do. So I asked him, Dr. Stoll, if he would put in our agenda to approve waiving the superintendent evaluation just for this, this year. So the recommendation by me is if you would approve that waiver tonight.
I make a motion. We approve the superintendent evaluation policy waiver for the show.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Hurd made the motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Ms. Smith seconded. Anybody have any questions?
Just want to assure the public that he's not off the hook.
No, 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 not being strict. No.
He's really mild. I, I would also like to, to make the comment that I think it sets a precedent when we waive our own policies. And I'm not necessarily fond of it.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else? All in favor, let me know by the hand. Four board members were in favor. Anybody opposed?
I am opposed.
Okay, Dr. Lamb is opposed. All right. Forward and one, the policy is approved, which brings us to item six.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
We have a motion to adjourn. Do I have a second?
Second.
We have a second. All in favor, let me know by the hand. All board members were in favor. We're adjourned at 6:20. Oh, we're picking.
That's a record.
It's a new entry, I believe. Thank you all. Thank you all for being part of this whole complete activity.